Call to order, the February 16th meeting of the Cabarrus County Commissioners. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight with the weather being questionable as it is. Would remind everybody to silence your cellphones and other noise-making devices. And at this time, we're happy to have with us tonight, presentation of colors from the Fire Academy Honor Guard of Concord High School.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's great line. Present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Arms. Thank you. All right, appreciate it.
We would ask that the members of the fire guard, if they would please come to the front and tell us your name and perhaps your parents' names. And Commissioner Poole will have pens for you, or Commissioner Honeycutt will, over to my right. Just come on up to the microphone.
My name is Jonathan Baldwin. I'm a senior at Concord High School, and I'm currently captain in the Fire Academy.
Thank you.
My name is Jose Don Salles. I'm a junior with Concord High School, and I'm a battalion chief.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Lancaster. I'm a sophomore at Concord High, and I'm a captain in the academy.
Thank you.
My name is JP Fuller. I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm a captain, Ann Chaplin. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, including the changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda, including the changes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Aka.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Next is our recognitions and presentation, and we have Sheriff Brad Riley and Deputy Keith Drake with us tonight to tell us about some DARE Association awards.
Deputy Drake with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office and North Carolina DARE Officers Association is the association that actually funds the program in the state of North Carolina to teach and instruct and certify new DARE officers throughout the entire state at no cost to the taxpayers or the agencies that send the officers. So, and that's who I am also representing tonight.
Yeah. Want me to add to that?
Please do.
Yeah. Actually, Sheriff Riley and Deputy Drake are both being recognized tonight. They were both recognized as the 2015, at the DARE Officers Association Conference. Sheriff Brad Riley was awarded the Glenn Mallory Law Enforcement Executive of the Year Award. Deputy Drake was awarded the Ralph Robinson Officer of the Year Award. Both of these are peer-nominated designations to recognize officers who demonstrate involvement in the DARE program and in the education of children. Both Sheriff Riley and Deputy Drake have made efforts to raise funds for DARE programs and look forward to upcoming fundraisers in 2015. Sheriff, you got one to add to it?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to say that I accepted this award on behalf of a wonderful group of men and women at Sheriff's Office that represent our school resource officer in DARE program, which we're very proud of. And I was humbled by it, but more humbled by the fact that I was able to also watch them hand this young man the DARE Officer Award for the whole state of North Carolina, which is representative of a lot of DARE officers in a lot of different schools in our state. And I think it's just representative of the fine people that we have in our school system and how serious they take it. And we should all here in Cabarrus County be proud to have folks like Officer Drake. And it was a pleasure to see such a deserving young man get that award. And he is just that. He works very, very, very hard every single day, takes it very serious. Not only did he work within the limits of his school last year, but he saw that the DARE program, or DARE Association, was hurting for funds. And what that would relate to is the fact that DARE officers have to be certified in the state of North Carolina to teach that curriculum in the school system. And if you can't get it, and if it's not offered through the state of North Carolina, then to be certified, you have to go outside of the state of North Carolina. So, they try to keep those funds within the state to keep travel budgets down and to keep our folks in state. And he was instrumental in setting up several fundraisers throughout the entire state with the help of that. And just very, very, very proud of Officer Drake and thinking outside of the box. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. One more thing? I really wasn't expecting this award when I was down there. It was a complete surprise and shock. But I gladly accepted it, and it's because of the people that I work with and the people that I work for here in Cabarrus County and the Sheriff's Office was the only way I was able to make that possible last year. So, the officers that I work with, and my sheriff and the administration that I work for. So, those are the ones that also get the credit for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. We appreciate what you do, and you make us proud of Cabarrus County even more every day. Next up is a video from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
We'd like to welcome you to the NCACC Update for February 2015. In today's program, we'll give you an overview of the Legislative Goals Conference that was held in January, and we'll introduce our Government Relations Team. You can get more information on any of the topics we present on our website or through our social media outlets. County officials from across North Carolina gathered in Moore County in mid-January. It was the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Biannual Legislative Goals Conference. This conference is held every two years, just prior to the start of the General Assembly's new biennium. It is the culmination of a months-long process that began in summer to determine the county's legislative agenda. This year, 70 counties submitted more than 300 proposals for consideration. The list was narrowed as the goals were reviewed by the NCACC Steering Committees, the Legislative Goals Committee, and finally by the Board of Directors. The conference began with an information session on Thursday morning. This session was designed to help commissioners have a better understanding of the current legislative environment. Joe Stewart, the Executive Director for the North Carolina Free Enterprise Foundation, reviewed the results of the 2014 state elections and what their impacts would be on the legislature. Our own Rebecca Troutman, the NCACC's Intergovernmental Relations Director, reviewed the status of the current year's state budget and how that will impact decisions made at the legislature this year.
We just got our January collections in, that distribution from the state. And remember, that really reflects sales that happened three months ago. We're not really seeing all the kicking from the holiday sales yet. We had a tremendous increase year from last January, but I caution my county finance officers that we still have a lot of outstanding nonprofit revenue refunds that have not hit, so don't go spending it all. But we are starting to see real growth in our sales taxes, and I think we can see that not only from an improving economy, but also with regards to the expansion of the sales tax base in 2013, and Amazon collecting remote sales on our behalf. They started doing that last February. So, I think all of those things coming together is really demonstrating some true growth in our sales tax base. But I do caution you not to rely on that huge boost in the January distribution as being a trend moving forward to the end of this fiscal year.
Voting began in earnest on Thursday afternoon. Eighty-nine counties sent voting delegates to the conference to debate 44 proposals in areas such as health and human services, tax and finance, justice and public safety, and public education. In addition, six new proposals were brought forward at the conference for consideration. In the end, voting delegates approved 45 goals for 2015 and 16. After approving the goals, voting delegates were asked to rank their top five priorities. Continued state funding of Medicaid and the restoration of the original 40 percent share of lottery proceeds designated for school construction were voted as the top two priorities for counties in 2015 and 16. Other priorities are to eliminate the general statute that allows school boards to sue boards of county commissioners over county appropriations for education, to ensure the state does not shift to counties any funding responsibility for transportation, such as secondary road construction and maintenance, and to avoid unfunded mandates or shifts of state responsibilities to counties. NCACC President Ronnie Beal of Macon County presided over the meeting.
Again, remember the guiding principles are above the goals. They have been thoroughly vetted by the Studying Committee, the Legislative Goals Committee, and the Board of Directors. All the members say aye?
Aye.
Any of you that's opposed? Ayes, ayes. Thank you very much. Good work.
The association's team of registered lobbyists advocates the county's interests before dozens of administrative, legislative, and rulemaking committees, both during and in between legislative sessions. Now here is an introduction to the NCACC Government Relations Staff. For more information on any of the items discussed in this program, visit ncc.org or any of our social media sites.
I'm glad we had a chance to see that Legislative Goals process. Commissioner Honeycutt and I, along with County Manager Downs, attended that event several weeks ago, so I'm glad you got to see Cabarrus County on the front row. They shift it every two years. We were on the back row last time, so we'll be back on the back row next session. But it is a very informative, very beneficial process, and the association does a good job of representing us in Raleigh. Next on our agenda are informal public comments, and I do not have any yellow cards tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the commissioners tonight? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which all of you have in front of you, all of these items we've discussed at our work session. And so I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes, and we move on to new business. First item is a public hearing in consideration of closure of part of North Drive in Mount Pleasant, and Jonathan Marshall is going to speak to us about that.
I'm going to give you an introduction to this item. Dave Burnett with the Schools is here to discuss some of the specifics of the necessity for this. I'll also, at the end, give you a recommendation for this particular meeting. This is a multi-step process. You've already passed a resolution declaring your intent to consider the closure of part of North Drive, which is necessary to reconstruct Mount Pleasant Middle School on that existing site. It is a process that also needs to go before the town of Mount Pleasant, because in this case, it's split jurisdiction. One jurisdiction on one side of the road, being Mount Pleasant, and Cabarrus County on the other. So, Mount Pleasant will be considering this at their meeting on the first Monday in March. Unfortunately, it was not calendered before the North Carolina DOT Board Meeting in Raleigh in February, as it was expected to be, so they'll be hearing that at the beginning of March also. And they have to make a decision on whether to abandon the maintenance of that portion of the road. You're actually making a decision, as well as the Mount Pleasant Commissioners, on whether to abandon the right-of-way itself. It does require a great deal of advertising, registered letters to everyone on North Drive or anyone who accesses from North Drive, and that's their sole means of access to their property. Our planning department notified all those property owners on both sides of Mount Pleasant Road, because even though there's a segment in North Drive that would be less affected to the east of Mount Pleasant Road, they still are affected potentially by this closure. As I said, NC DOT has not heard this yet. They'll hear it in March, so I would not recommend that you take any action on this tonight. There is a street closing order that I included, that was included as part of your agenda, that you would consider at some point at probably your March meeting, but at this point, without the NC DOT acting, I wouldn't recommend you take any action. In speaking with Mr. Cook, I would also suggest that because of the inclement weather and because you're not making a decision on this, that rather than closing this public hearing, that once you've opened it, that you recess it to your March meeting in case someone wants to make comments at that meeting.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Jonathan?
With that, I'm going to set up a board for Mr. Burnett and let him address the specifics.
Thank you, Jonathan. Just a couple items, as he's setting that up, and then I'll do a little overview of the project. But on November 18th of 2014, Cabarrus County Schools held a public information session on this road closure. We did invite affected residents. We advertised, actually, I think it's the same mailing list that probably you used for this public hearing. On December 18th, I'm sorry, on December 8th, 2014, the Board of Education approved a resolution expressing support for the closure of North Drive. So, at this point, I'll try to let you hear me on the microphone and go over the project. The Board of Education is desiring to continue the operation of the existing school. So, the existing school will operate during the entire time that we're doing the construction. So, we have located the school such that we can construct the new school, which is right here. Specifically, this is the two-story wing. This is more of the public spaces. That's going to have the auditorium, the gymnasium, the media center, the dining spaces, the administration spaces, in addition to some specific classrooms for that. Then we have the parking areas in here. Got the bus parking lot. Yeah, that'll help. Thank you. Two-story wing. This is the single-story wing. It's more of the public spaces on the building. We've got drop-off circulation, also with additional visitor parking. We have bus parking in this area, and we have additional staff parking in this area. And specifically, this is North Drive, and this is North Drive. What we're proposing is to close North Drive from here to here. It's approximately 500 linear feet. I think it's .43 acres. What we do propose to do, however, is to have circulation so that there is a connection. Now, we don't want to invite that kind of connection throughout the day. That is something that we do see is more on an emergency basis. The residents who live in this area have access to North Drive, as they always have, and they'll be able to turn right and access Highway 49. The folks who live back here will be able to access what's labeled as Main Street here and get to the intersection of Highway 49, and then they'll have their access that way. So, really, what we do see is the, I guess, probably a fundamental shift or change, is that often people use this as a cut-through. So, that cut-through will actually, that'll stop, but we do still maintain access. So, everyone still has access to their properties. This is current county property, and this is current county property. No other land earners are affected by this. So, what we do have proposed for control measures is that we will have a gate positioned here, and we'll actually have a gate probably positioned here. We show it right there, probably there, just so that service vehicles won't have to be messing with the gate. How that gate is operated will be up to the school. Whether it's something that they manually close, open and close, is going to be at the school level. But we will construct it, and we'll have it gated and keyed such that the emergency vehicles that need access to it will be able to operate the keys and the access to it. So, that's really the site. And to tell how the project will be constructed, currently, this is the middle school site. There's, one of the first things we would do is actually construct the cul-de-sac. We would also, there's an auxiliary gem that's located here. That would be demolished in this first phase. We would then construct the school. When we finish the school, we'll move from the old school into the new school. After we're moved in, then we'll demolish the old school. After we demolish that school, we'll construct the fields and the remainder of the parking lots. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Dave, on the, of course, I've seen this plan before. Actually, I think it's one that Dodd drew up a couple of years ago, I believe, similar. But when we close, if this board approves the closure of 49 during that section there, and you got your turnaround there, you know, where you've got it marked, and you got your gate up just a little ways from the service entrance to the school facilities there, what other access are there to get to the classrooms, other than that locked gate there? I'm assuming it would be locked. Do the students, how do they get to the school part?
Okay. So, here's the bus parking lot. Buses can either park in here, or they can park along here. We will have a canopy along here. They will access from the bus parking lot to the canopy. This is the front doors, and they'll enter the school that way.
Now, that part that you got right there, the proposed building footprint, that big area there, now what is that area again?
Okay. So, this is a two-story classroom wing.
That's the classroom space back there. I understand that.
And this contains the gymnasiums, the auditorium, the dining, the media center, specific classrooms like health classrooms, band course, art, the administration. So, specifically, this is the administration area. This is an auxiliary gem, main gem, and then we've got media center, health classrooms. This is band course, drama. This is auditorium, and this is dining.
So, basically, the children, the students, will have to go through that building to get to the student area?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, for emergency vehicles, other type access to get to that. Say there's an emergency in the back part where the school is.
Sure.
And that's two-story too, by the way. Is that right?
Two stories, yes.
Two-story, yeah.
So, this is the fire loop. We construct the fire loop, but we don't want regular access, you know, on the fire loop. I mean, we really want it to be dedicated to the fire loop, so that's another reason to have the gate there. We don't want people parking back there. We don't want any interference with any emergency operations. So, this is the fire loop, but it's specifically for access from fire trucks.
I don't know that it would ever be an issue, and God forbid that it ever was, but if there was some type of an issue going on in that school building part, access to me would be a concern. Emergency vehicle access, it would be a concern because you're going to have to find somebody with a key to open the gate to let the people get back there to take care of whatever they need to take care of, or bring them all the way through the media center and all of that to get them out to the front of the school.
Well, all of the emergency egress requirements will be met. As you see, there's exits here, exits there, there's exits there. As people, if there's an issue, fire drills, whatever, people will be exiting, and there is space for them. Folks over here, you know, whether they are crowded and brought through, that's something that, really, that's at the school level, and we'll be talking with them. But, you know, a lot of people in this type of space, and there's a lot of exits. For that, all of that will be, you know, meeting the requirements.
Well, that's definitely a unique design for that site there, and, you know, I'm sure that it'll work. That was the only concern I had as DPI, Department of Public Instruction. Have they reviewed these plans, or this site plan?
So, Todd, DD? Yeah. So, the DD, which is Design Development, that has gone to NCDPI. We have, actually, we've received some comments on that, I do recall, seeing the mechanical comments on that, which were not significant. But they will see the construction documents phase, which is the phase we're in right now. So, when that's completed, that will be sent to them. We'll be getting their comments. We'll be getting the Department of Insurance comments. So, it's NCDPI, it's NC DOI, along with other agencies. There are several state agencies that.
Yes, I remember a lot. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious about the traffic flow. Where do the buses enter and where do the cars enter? It looks like you're going to have an awful lot of traffic.
Okay. So, here, and hopefully you all can see this. This is the entrance for the buses. The buses will come in here, and they can park like this, or the buses can come in here and they can stack like that. Then they exit. Our expectation is that they will come back out here. If there is a reason for them to come over there, they have that opportunity to do that. Cars that will be dropping off students will enter up here. And what we did do is we have designed this to house more cars than we anticipate needing for the drop-off. There's a state formula that we follow, and I know we surpass the state's formula for amount of stacking that is required on the site. We more than, we do surpass that. We don't anticipate that being an issue. We looked at the amount of stacking that they were currently receiving, and the amount that we're providing is far more than what they currently have. So, all the cars will be able to be housed on the site, in the circulation route. They drop off, and then they exit. They'll exit up here. Some staff, if they want, if they're from this area, or for whatever reason, if it's advantageous, and if this is not closed, not locked, you know, they can enter and park in here, or they can exit and park that way. Again, that's going to be more controlled at the school level. If it functions better for them to have that closed, then they'll close it. If it is no issue for them to have it open, they'll probably have it open.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners?
One. Is that okay? Are you all finished? Just, Dave, on parks and rec, when they use the gyms, where are you proposing they park? Are they in this front parking lot here, or will they be able to park where you've got staging areas and stuff?
Really, they can park in designated spots here. And I've seen what happens at Mount Pleasant. They really park everywhere for, they have very popular programs, very, a lot of support, which is fantastic. We do anticipate, we are double-striping the bus parking lot, so that it's parked for buses, but it's also parked for cars if the buses aren't there, and it's a public, it's weekend use, whatever. And we do have a lot of spaces that are lined here, and we have the spaces here. So, we are providing more spaces than they currently have, and we're providing much more stacking than they currently have.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being with us.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is. Public hearing is open, consideration of closing part of North Drive in Mount Pleasant. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of? Anybody would like to speak in opposition to? I think that it would be a good idea to follow Deputy County Manager Marshall's recommendation to recess this public hearing until our next meeting to get in the event that people would like to come and comment since the inclement weather tonight, and we would need a motion from the board to do that.
Mr. Chairman, would that, Jonathan, would that be our regular meeting in March? Because most people don't come to the work session to make comments, so.
That would be your regular meeting in March. We do have signs at either end of North Drive. Posted, we would alter those signs to reflect that, as well as our electronic advertising to reflect that.
I think the date of that meeting is March 16th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we recess the public hearing to our March 16th meeting at 6:30 or such a time as, or I don't know exactly how you want to put it on there. If we'd actually have, we would open a public hearing then too? Or since we're recessing it, we would have to open the public hearing, right?
You would just reopen, and we usually advertise at 6:30 or soon thereafter as possible.
So that would be my motion, to recess it until then.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes, and we will reopen that public hearing on March the 16th.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple comments now after the public hearing? And I shared this with Dave beforehand. I did get a couple, and it's, you know, it's not a lot, but whenever you get, someone gets your ear, you like to listen. So I have had a couple people out in that community express that what they really wanted was for us not to close the drive, because then it would force the school system to do something differently. I'm not really in favor of that particular tactic, but there is concern of some people in Mount Pleasant. As you said, they have a very active athletic program. Listening to the school board's meeting, they're going to ask, I think they're going to come and ask us for $500,000 or more to refurbish the football stadium there, and that's not included in the original, or the amount that's being talked about for that school. So there are some concerns from the people in Mount Pleasant of the ballfields and the loss of those ballfields. So that conversation is still going on. I don't think it's our responsibility not to approve this in order to force a hand, but it is still a conversation that's being had. I do hope that as this process continues and that the reviews come in, that the price is going to come down greatly from the last one that was quoted, because that is going to be a huge problem for future requests from both school systems, if the price tag. Because I think that what's happening is that, which if you can, you can bring that back to us in March, there are a lot of utilities and site work that's going to have to be done that are adding to the cost of that particular project, and that's a concern versus sometimes it's actually more beneficial to buy property and start from scratch than it is to take a piece of property and have to move a whole lot around. But my understanding is there's quite a number of issues with that site. So I just wanted to mention that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing more about those specifics. Anybody else have comments on that item? If not, we'll move to number two under new business, planning and development, home program, 2015-16 funding year, and Kelly Sifford is going to talk with us before we hold a public hearing on that matter.
As we talked about at the agenda session, we are proposing that we work with Prosperity Unlimited, the City of Kannapolis, and Wesley Community Development Corporation to assist in funding a tax credit housing project for seniors. The site is on Little Texas Road, adjacent to one of our nutrition sites currently. We are proposing that we use all of our funds and our match funds for next year toward this project. As we discussed before, we had had problems qualifying people for rehab, and this does dovetail nicely with the plan that you just approved on the consent agenda for the aging strategic plan. So are there any questions?
I do have a question. I don't believe in the workshop that we discussed a, an income guideline for these residents.
There is one. This is low-income. I believe it's probably going with the 80%. They are, will be required as part of our, with our contract, to provide, I believe it's a 20-year horizon, they have to have a certain amount of units based on the funding that we put in, and then, of course, same thing with Kannapolis, the funding that they would put in. They will sign a contract to that effect, and we will monitor them annually to make sure that a certain amount of the residents are low-income.
So there would be residents who are not low-income. This is not strictly a low-income housing project.
I'm not 100% sure on the answer to that. I'll have to get back to you. It may all be.
To know what the balance is.
Yeah, it may all be, but certainly, a good portion of it.
The idea is to help the low-income, and I want to be sure that's who we're helping.
And honestly, that's the bulk of it. That was the discussion that we had. I can't answer with 100% certainty, but that was a lot of the discussion that we had with the nonprofits, was, you know, they were saying that typically, someone that is just on Social Security, maybe small pension even, qualifies, but that's about it. But I would, I will confirm that for sure for you.
Additional questions, commissioners? If there are no others, then we will open the public hearing. The public hearing is open regarding the home program for 2015-16 funding year. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in regards to this matter? If not, we will close the public hearing and would entertain a motion to authorize a commitment letter to be advanced on this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we authorize staff to provide a commitment letter.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, authorizing a commitment letter on this project. Yes, ma'am.
I will be voting no on this one because of the question I just had. I don't feel like I should vote on it until I know who these people are that are going to be benefiting from this. I may be picky, but I just wanted you to understand my vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion passes for one. Okay, next up are appointments to boards and committees. First, we have the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. The term of appointment for Teresa Dakens on the Adult Home Care Community Advisory Committee expires on February 28th, 2015. Ms. Dakens would like to be reappointed for another three-year term. She has been approved by the Regional Almbudsmen. We have also received an application from Maryam Khasimpour to serve on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. She has been approved by the Regional Almbudsmen. If appointed, she would need to be appointed to an initial one-year term. Just as a note, there are currently eight vacancies on this committee, if there are people out there that are interested in that. We would need a motion to fill a vacancy on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term, ending February 28th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that Teresa Dakens be appointed to the three-year term, and that Maryam Khasimpour would be appointed to an initial one-year term.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, we have appointment and removal to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Applications to serve on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority have been received from Danny Fesperman and Robert Link. Notice was received that a member of the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, Dr. James Havlin, has passed away since the last time the authority convened. Dr. Havlin was first appointed to the authority in 1994. It is requested to remove his name from the roster. The authority meets on an as-needed basis, and the county attorney serves as the contact for this authority. There are a number of vacancies on this authority, and interested members with finance, industrial, or related experience are encouraged to apply. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to approve these appointments and one removal? Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. You have a number of reports that are attached to our agenda. At this time, I would open the floor for general comments by board members.
Well, I just want to make one comment, and as you, I hope that you know, I think it was in the paper, Coleman Keeter from WASAC has retired, and I wanted to say, I've served on that board with Jonathan. Coleman has done an excellent job at WASAC, and his leadership will be missed. So congratulations to Coleman on retirement, something I hope to get to at some point in my life, and hope that he has a grand time not having to work every day, and we need to thank him for all the hard work and the service that he has done. People don't think about your sewer until it doesn't work, and you don't think about the system that serves the residents in Cabarrus County until it doesn't work, and that's an excellent, well-run organization, and we should all be very thankful for his leadership.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you have an extensive report from Cardinal Innovations, and in looking over that report, I confirmed that I need to be meeting with them, which I already had planned to try to understand better what their programs are, who they, how they're funded, who they serve, because it seems to be very complicated but very important to the community.
Thank you. Any other comments? It has been mentioned before, I will mention it again, each of the five commissioners serve on eight to nine other boards as representatives of this board. Typically, I have a list of things to report on, and due to the inclement weather, I'm going to save them till next meeting, so we'll have extra-long meeting next time. But thank you. We appreciate it. We do have need of a closed session tonight, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, expansion of industry, and negotiation of real property per NC General Statute 143-318, 11A, 3, 4, and 5, and would invite the county manager and the county attorney into closed session with us.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. And we will now adjourn into closed session. We appreciate all of you being with us tonight, and drive home carefully.